Good evening. I'm going to call the August 7th session of the Town Council meeting to order. We just had a closed session meeting prior to this. We have nothing to report. If everybody would like to join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have open time for public --
After the roll conference.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Councilmember Bailey?
Here.
Councilmember Beckman?
Here.
Councilmember Kuhnhart?
Here.
Vice Mayor Andrews?
Present.
Mayor Ravazio?
Here. Okay. We have open time for public comment. Please confine your comments during this portion to three minutes, but this is a time when the public can get up and speak about anything that is not on the agenda. Is there anybody who would like to talk? Yes. Patty. Anything you can give your name, please?
Patty Stollier, Age Friendly Corne Madara. I just wanted to say that this morning, the Board of Supervisors was petitioned by a whole bunch of age-friendly people to submit an application to get the county of Marin as a designated age-friendly county. So, our word is spreading and we're taking over the world. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, moving on. We have no presentations. Moving on to the consent calendar. Is there anybody -- consent calendar is to group items together which are routine or have been discussed previously, do not require further discussion. They will be approved by a single motion. Anyone from the town staff or council can request removal of an item. Is there anybody who would like to remove an item? Yes, Mr. Andrews.
Item 4, 4 dot 4.
4 dot 4? Designation of U.S. Bicycle Route 95. Okay, so you'd like to remove that?
Yes.
I'll make a motion that we approve items 4 point 1 little i through --
About the public --
Oh, I thought you already did.
Please, go ahead.
About the number, the one about the banners.
I'm sorry, can you come to the microphone? I'm sorry, we're on TV now, so.
One about the banners.
Patty Stollier, Age Friendly Corne Madara. I just wanted to ask if we could have a discussion about the placement of the banner request.
What number is that? Number 3?
Thank you.
Okay, so we're going to pull 4 point 1 point 3 and 4 point 1 point 4.
There was some confusion about the locations.
Okay. Will you pull those items?
And, Mr. Mayor, I have two very quick questions on one of the items, and I don't need to pull it if the questions could be answered very quickly, and that is the Public Works maintenance contract. Is the new amount that's in this new contract less than last year?
Yes, $200,000 less.
I thought so. That's really cool. And, we do intend to go to an RFP process in a year?
Yes, we anticipate six months.
Okay, then I have no further questions on that item.
Okay. So, I will bring it back to the council then, unless the public has anything else, and we will open it up for a possible motion.
Okay, I'll move that we approve items 4 point 1 point 1, 4 point 1 point 2, and 4 point 1 point 5 through 10.
Okay. Is there a second on that?
Second.
Okay.
Nice.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Beckman?
Yes.
Councilmember Kuhnhart?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Andrews?
Yes.
Mayor Ravazio?
Yes. Okay, then let's come back, then I guess we come back to 4 point 1 point 3, and we have, first, we will open that up for public comment.
My name is Patty Stollier.
And this is, for everybody's benefit, consideration and possible action to adopt resolution endorsing Age Friendly Corne Madara, allowing free temporary signs in the public right-of-way from August 8th to August 27th, 2018.
Thank you. So, the confusion arises because when we made the request via the Recreation Department to the Planning Department, we got an email back noting five locations, and it said, "Two of them are being held and we'll wait to hear further." In the resolution, it says for three locations, and if you look at the map of the resolution, there are two locations. So, we're hoping that our four banners that are over at Public Works waiting to be hung will be at the opposite Safeway, the two on Warnham, and the top of where Corne Madara Avenue meets Tamil Pious at Minkie Park.
Does the staff have anything? So, you basically want to make sure that there's four signs, it sounds like.
At those locations.
Okay, then, is there any further public comment? I will bring it back to the council for discussion. Yes.
I don't know, I'd like to hear what, I mean, Peter or somebody's got to say about it. Adam, maybe? Whatever you think.
A joint Public Works program.
No, that's fine. We're all trying to figure out, we're all trying to figure out what's going on, so.
Yeah, unfortunately, you know, I'm not entirely aware of this, all the specifics of this, but there are five designated areas for banners in town. As I understand it, two are potentially reserved for the time period that are identified, August 8th to August 27th, or at least a portion of that time, and three may be available. I will say that we will put, authorize, it does say three here, as many as spaces are available to put up, but is that, you know, I --
Are those three, three out of the four that I mentioned? Or is it one?
Three out of the, yeah, so there's five total. I understand there may be two that are currently reserved already, as in previously approved by, all these go through under consent calendar items through the council, so I understand there are maybe two. I don't have the specifics on that, but if there are two already, that leaves three that would be available to put up.
It just approved the Spark sign. Tampa Vista and Warnham, Redwood Avenue near Matasito, by the bus shelter. And for stub period, Bigwood Highway at Warnham. So, those are, are any of those spots you wanted to figure signs?
Is that for the same time period? The 8th through the 26th?
August 23rd through September 23rd.
There's an overlap of about four days there.
Oh, no, that, that we're not concerned about. We're more concerned about the 8th through the 21st, 22nd. But, the four positions that we were aiming for are the two ends of Warnham, the opposite Safeway, and the crest at Minkie Park where Corne Madara meets Tamil Pious.
Okay. Can we accommodate that, Adam, or you're not sure?
Honestly, I, without, I don't have the schedule in front of me to know that.
So, we have some specifics.
I think the discussion here talks about two locations on the southwest corner of Corne Madara Avenue, Redwood, and on Madara Boulevard across from Safeway. So...
The southeast corner, you mean?
So, there's, there potentially is one other location based on the title of the adopted resolution. If this is actually approved, that we could then plug in to another location if that, if it is in fact available. I just don't have in front of me the actual calendar schedule.
So, Teresa, do we have, what I'd like to do, and please listen to this Patty and make sure it comports with you, I'd like to make a motion to approve it as written, but to amend the motion to empower our planning director to isolate additional three or two spots as he sees appropriate. Can we do that, or is that like in excess of authority?
No, you can, you can go ahead and do that. You can delegate that to the staff.
Do you like, so that's a motion?
Well, I mean, are we done with discussion? Are you guys good with that? David, do you care?
I am good with it.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion that we approve the resolution as written, but with one modification, which is to explicitly empower our planning director with the authority to designate up to a total of five locations within his discretion.
Sloan, thank you for that clarification. Is there a second?
Yes.
Just one moment. We would need to make sure there's no further public comment on this item before you take your --
I just wanted to, since it doesn't comport with the map, to find out what the spaces are that you were talking about. Is it two that are on the map in your, in your packet?
If I heard correctly, we're going to figure it out as best we can.
Okay. It's tomorrow morning, so that's why I was --
Well, let's just look at it right now, then. What two are in the resolution?
I think is what you're hearing.
Well, the name of the resolution calls for three, but the map has two Google spots on it.
The two locations are the southwest corner of Corne Madara Ave. at Redwood Avenue, and location two is on Madara Boulevard across from Safeway. Those are the two.
Okay, so those are the two which the resolution is intended to explicitly approve right now, and the other three that you'd like, Patty. I think the Town Council is sending the message that we're good with it so long as the planning director is okay with it, but we are not making that decision. We're leaving it to the planning director to figure it out. Is that acceptable to you?
Whatever is going to work.
Okay. Then we will close public comment.
Thank you.
Motion's already been made and seconded.
Second.
Second of the motion, okay. Kuhnhart?
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Beckman?
Yes.
Councilmember Kuhnhart?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Andrews?
Yes.
Mayor Ravazio?
Yes. Okay, now consent calendar item 4 point 1 point 4, which was pulled with the request of Mr. Andrews.
My question is that --
Any questions, or?
Yes. Where is the minute from the BPAC meeting when this, where this was discussed?
Councilmember Andrews, this was never discussed at BPAC. We got this request, I think, a couple of weeks ago. There has not been a BPAC meeting before that, and it's, it's not something that ASHTO was looking for. It was more of a designation from the council that they were interested in than anything from BPAC.
Okay, 'cause I went on the website for Adventure Cycling Association, who I guess is actually the head count that is pushing this, and they said the selected road should carry fewer than 1,000 vehicles per 24 hours, which doesn't sound like the road I know up the street. Optimal width is 24 feet wide, two 12-foot lanes, and with two to four-foot paved shoulders on either side. That doesn't sound like that, okay? Visibility is important. Well, there's issues with visibility as folks are coming up and down that hill. I think sending them over to Casablanca would be a better location for this, but I also think BPAC should look into it.
Okay.
And study it. Also, how does this fit in with the North-South Greenway project?
Perhaps a little background would be helpful. So, this is an ASHTO, a national designation of a bike route, and what they're doing is they're already looking at the existing most common path of travel between, I would say, Olima and Mill Valley. The only other comparable route is Highway 1, all the way down in terms of volume of usage of bicyclists. This is, actually has more through the five cities, through Fairfax, down into Mill Valley, and actually over Corne Madara Avenue and Camino Alto. So, the volumes that exist over on Casablanca or Meadowsuite as an alternative route, I agree, that's, that's a calmer route. It's less vehiculately traveled, but when we spoke with the folks at ASHTO and at the Cycling Association, they said that, you know, this route is primarily for bicycle tourists that are very well accustomed, many of them riding from Canada down through Mexico. So, these, this designation for a statewide route goes through the heart of Los Angeles and LAX. It goes through all kinds of places in, you know, San Diego and Orange County. The Marin County portion of it would be quite calm and peaceful in comparison to many of the urban transverses, including San Francisco. So, when we had that discussion with them, and they were looking for support from council, mostly to be able to sign and designate in the public right-of-way, and to have a record that the town supports the bicycle traveling through our portion of the state route, we felt like, you know, that's appropriate. It's certainly well-traveled and well-used, and we don't have the ability to meet their optimal conditions of 20 feet, 24-foot wide roads with, you know, bike, bike lanes and shoulders. They put those parameters in there because those are the ideal, those are the guidelines, but we, we don't meet that here at any, any part of town, actually, as a matter of fact. So...
So, you don't feel we're taking on any obligation, or?
You know, I think for them, I don't think we're taking on any obligation. I don't think that this resolution, should the council choose to adopt it, comes with any strings attached. It's simply the fact that the federal designation has support of all of, they're looking for support for all of the jurisdictions that the route passes through, and so far as I know, they've got, they're batting 1,000. So, they've got support from anyone, in fact, from everyone they've asked. In fact, I worked on this project when I was down in Santa Barbara, and the town, the designation comes right through the heart of State Street and the center of town there. So, that's where most of the bicycle tourists come through.
Any other questions from council? I'm going to open it up to public comment. If, does public, any member from the public wish to? No? Okay, hearing none, I'll bring it back to the council for comments, questions, and direction.
I would like to send it back to the BPAC so they could look at it. A question I have is, does this supersede, replace, ignore the North-South Greenway project that we've been working on for a generation? Because if you want to get from one end of Marin County to the other, isn't that, wasn't that what its purpose was?
The North-South Greenway?
Yeah, yeah, okay.
The bridge.
And so, that's what I --
Okay. So, you'd be interested in seeing a staff report and maybe additional work.
Yeah, yeah, do details.
Any other comment, or?
I don't know. I, I guess I look at this somewhat differently. To me, this is kind of an acknowledgement of reality and, and an acceptance of a, of a little bit of an honor to be part of this from Canada to Southern California designated route. I'd love to see us have two different north-south routes and two different east-west routes in town, myself.
Yes, sir.
Do you mind if I ask you a question?
Please, go ahead.
Peter, is there an urgency of any kind of this?
Yes, they're looking to complete the designation. I think we're one of the, we're the back end. Like I said, I worked on this a year and a half ago in Santa Barbara, and that council approved. I don't, I don't think that, the designation's going to exist. Whether or not we authorize that, that the council supports the designation through Corne Madara or not, I think all, all that would come of that is that, you know, we would appear to be not supporting of cycle tourism, but in terms of the route, it's already been decided and designated. It's just a matter of whether or not the council supports it officially through the resolution, and whether or not the Public Works Department is okay with putting up signage along the route to help wayfinding of the travelers who choose to go up and down the coast by U.S. Route 95.
I, I just mean the intensity with which we consider, my own, my own view about the intensity with which we consider it'll be affected if, if we have to, if it's going to, if our decision will affect like a potential for a grant or something.
No, there's no fiscal implications. Again, the route has already been decided and designated. It would just be that the town of Corne Madara would not have, you know, supported it officially through the, through the resolution process.
Okay, but I mean, if we did it in like a month or something, that may not be --
It's up to you, certainly up to you.
How frequently does a, does a committee meet?
The BPAC is meeting this month.
I mean, could we just put it on, I don't know, I'm just trying to --
We can easily, it sounds like there's enough questions about this. We've had some questions from the public. I'm fine with us pulling this and trying to get in front of the BPAC and trying to get a little more information. Does that make sense for everybody?
Has Larkspur signed off on this?
I'm not aware of where they're at in the process.
Because, you know, one of, if you go on their web, the --
I know the route does go through Larkspur. I don't know what actions the Larkspur council has taken.
Right, but one of the things that goes on in terms of, you know, the, on their webs, on their website, they talk about what they're looking for in terms of a bike route, and one thing's is that on-street parking has been restricted or eliminated, and if you're going to go up and down Magnolia, that's a big deal, particularly in Larkspur, where you have a lot of businesses who are struggling, and if they're going to wipe out parking there, that's going to be an issue.
To clarify, Councilmember Andrews, it's not that the advocacy group is looking to make those changes. It's when they designate or they talk about ideal conditions for which a route should run through, the reason for that is because of the dooring condition. So, by adopting this resolution, or if the town of Larkspur were to adopt a similar resolution, we would under, be under no obligation whatsoever to change our parking requirements. That's a decision of the council, not of ASHTO, or Caltrans, or any advocacy group. So, this would have no bearing on that. Their, their ideas for what an ideal, you know, bicycle route is, I think you've outlined well.
I'll make a motion to continue this item to a date certain, and that date being the next Town Council meeting following the next meeting of the BPAC committee.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Beckman?
Yes.
Councilmember Kuhnhart?
Okay, yes.
Vice Mayor Andrews?
Yes.
Mayor Ravazio?
Yes. Okay. Moving on to sanitary district items, 4 point 2 point 1 and 4 point 2 point 2. Anyone who wants to pull one, remember the public or council members, pull one for further discussion. Is there a motion?
Do public comment.
Oh, open it for public. I asked if any members of the public are --
I'll move that we approve items at 4 2 1 and 4 2 2.
Second.
Board Member Bailey?
Yes.
Board Member Beckman?
Yes.
Board Member Kuhnhart?
Yes.
Vice President Andrews?
Yes.
President Ravazio?
Yes.
You're going to have to get orange hair.
Huh?
If you're going to be president, you have to get orange hair.
Yeah, not going to happen. Okay, then, moving on to item 5 point 1, public hearing to consider shoot action of ordinance 977 and ordinance of the town imposing and extending a special tax for paramedic and/or emergency medical services. Report from Chief Scherz.
So, at the last meeting, oh, sorry. At the last meeting, council directed staff to research the financial aspect of and need of the parcel tax that we were proposing, and it was staff's decision to bring back the motion for, or the issue for maintaining the tax at its current rate. We feel that we will be able to sustain services by keeping it at $75, and I think that was the hope and intention of the council at the time. So, it is before you now, and it simply is an extension of the current parcel tax in the same form that it is now, just an four-year extension. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions from the council for staff? Okay, hearing none, I will open it up to the public for comments or questions on this issue. Okay, hearing none, I will bring it back to the council for any comments or a possible motion.
I appreciate the chief, chief's crisper formulation of this issue this, this month, and it's very comprehensible, even for me.
Very crisp.
And it's, and I appreciate your willingness to just ask for the flat extension for four years from 19 to 23, myself. Thank you.
Anything else? No? Is there a motion?
I'd move to adopt the, introduce, excuse me, introduce the ordinance that will, if adopted by us, place this item on the November 6th ballot.
Second.
Yes.
Councilmember Beckman?
Yes.
Councilmember Kuhnhart?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Andrews?
Yes.
Mayor Ravazio?
Yes. Okay, thank you. Moving on, thank you, Scott.
How many, chief, how many of our, how many of the 14,000 firefighters in North Bay are ours?
Currently, six.
Yeah.
And we're actually planning to do a crew swap in a couple of days because they do not want to release the engine, but they have to release the personnel, so we're going to bring fresh personnel up to replace them.
Yeah, best of luck.
Thank you.
And that's out of how many?
I'm sorry?
How many firefighters in total?
14,000, I heard.
But in our, in our department? Well, we have 35 total, but on duty at any one time are 11.
Okay.
So, it's significant.
Six out of 35, that's a big number.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Item 6 point 1 point I, discuss an impossible action to adopt resolution of the Town Council of Corne Madara calling and giving notice of the holding of a special election to be held on November 6th. Staff, please. Rebecca, is this yours?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. This item is in tandem with the introduction of the ordinance in order to formally call for bringing the ordinance to the voters for consideration. We have to formally call an election and request consolidation with the county, along with several other steps as indicated in the staff report title that are all necessary for bringing this item to the public for consideration on the November 6th ballot.
Okay, thank you very much. Any questions from the council for staff? Any questions or comments from the public? Okay, hearing none, I will bring it back to the council for comments and a possible motion.
Oh, actually, the, there, one item I would like to highlight is that within the resolution are two blank spaces that would need to be filled at this time, and it's on page 6, section 10 of the resolution. You would be authorizing up to two council members to prepare a written argument in support of the proposed ordinance not to exceed 300 words on behalf of the Town Council, and to select three or four community members. Those community members do not need to be designated at this time, but I do need to populate those spaces with the names of the council members you select. And those council members, should an argument opposed to the ordinance be filed, those same council members would also be authorized to write a rebuttal.
So, I'm, I'll volunteer, guys. I don't mind, I'm going to be one of those people.
Okay, anybody else?
I'll do it unless one of them wants. I'm, I'm open to working it.
Okay, so Sloan and David, we have two volunteers.
Thank you.
Okay.
So, I'll move that we adopt the resolution with that modification.
Second.
Well, we're very quick today.
Now, there's A, B, C, D, E afterwards.
Correct.
Are we doing all A, B, C, D?
No, no, they can all be done in one motion, but A is calling and giving notice of the holding of the special election, B is requesting consolidation of said election with the November 6th statewide general election, and requesting that the Board of Supervisors consolidate our election with the county election. C would be directing the town attorney to prepare an impartial analysis of the measure pursuant to election codes. D is authorizing two council members to draft, sign, and submit the ballot argument. And E is authorizing the town clerk, or my duly authorized officers, to carry out all the necessary procedures for said election.
Okay, thank you.
We had a motion and a second. Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Beckman?
Yes.
Councilmember Kuhnhart?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Andrews?
Yes.
Mayor Ravazio?
Yes.
All right, we are having an election.
And we're moving, that's good. 6 point 1 point 2, discussion and possible action concerning council committee appointments for 2018, 2019. Report from Rebecca Vaughn.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. Every year after we reorganize and select a new mayor and vice mayor, the following meeting is for the assignment of council committee appointments, and these committee appointments include standing committees, ad hoc committees, as well as the council representatives to the various boards and commissions. When we interview each, each year, we request that two council members volunteer
When we interview each, each year, we request that two council members volunteer their time to interview the applicants to those boards and committees as well.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions from the council for staff? Hearing none, I will open it up to the public for any questions or comments. Hearing none, then it will come back to council. And I'm going to announce, or ask, I guess I should say, about standing committees and filling all these positions, so this will take a couple minutes. First off, Standing Committee, ABAG, Eli, we'd like you to be the rep on that, if you can do that, and Jim, you will stay as the alternate. Will continue to benefit from your experience there. Age-friendly Porta Madera, our representative, will be Eli.
Great.
Pointee to SCC, MCC level rise, Jim is going to move up. He's been the alternate on that.
Okay.
Jim, that's good. Eli, can you be the alternate on that?
Gladly.
Boy, you're getting off strong.
Pointee to the MCC, MC homeless committee, I will continue on that. Appointment, appointee to the MCC, MC Legislative Committee, Sloan, if you can hang in on that. And Jim, you can continue to be the alternate.
Okay.
BPAC, I actually thought about leaving that, but my wife pointed out that would be the wrong time to do that after my bike accident, so. I'm going to continue on that. Who would like to be an alternate? There isn't really much to do there, but, so.
I'll do it if necessary.
Jim, we'll do that, great, Jim, thank you. Central Marin Fire Authority, I will continue on that. And Sloan, if we can add you on that. And Jim, if you can continue as the alternate, that would be terrific. Central Marin Police Authority, if we could add, make Sloan and myself the representatives on that. And Jim, if you can continue as the alternate on that. Central Marin Sanitation, I believe Diane First continues on that through the end of the year, but then we need to assign someone. So if Eli, if you could step in and become our representative for that, that would be terrific.
Okay.
Sloan, if you could stay as the alternate.
Yeah.
Chamber of Commerce, ex officio director, I guess Eli, if you can step in and do that.
Sure. Just gobbling these up.
They're unbelievable.
Give the new guys all the work.
I know.
Do you need an alternate?
Do we need an alternate for that?
There has been in the past.
I guess we do. Would you like to do it, David?
I would.
Okay. Chamber of Commerce.
And David is the alternate?
Yes. I'll continue on the Disaster Council. Flood Control Board, yes. Yeah.
The town attorney had a question about ABAG. And we, I guess we usually state that we are not contributing members of ABAG, but we do host the meetings here, and we do assign a council member to attend those meetings and oversee, but we are not a participating member, no.
Since you brought it up.
Thank you.
Since you brought it up, Mr. Mayor, won't be the appropriate time to revisit that question?
Not now. I would talk to staff, and we can get it on a future agenda.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, if I may, Mayor?
Yes.
I, your planning, I mean, sorry, your public works director has just pointed out to me that ABAG was absorbed into MTC, and so.
Oh, that's correct.
This would actually be a, the Standing Committee would be for MTC. But all of the duties of ABAG have been absorbed into, into that.
Right, so it should say ABAG, MTC?
Or just MTC.
So we have no choice as to whether we want to be part of MTC, right?
I might need to see if they're even going to continue to meet here. I'm assuming this is for the Marin, what does Pat call it? The Marin Representatives, Marin delegates to ABAG is what, the group that meets here?
Right.
So I'll have to see how they intend to continue going forward. But my understanding is that they still intend to meet as the Marin delegates.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, I apologize.
Okay.
Bob, I can be the alternate if you want one for disaster.
Oh, thank you, that would be great. And Flood Control Board Liaison, Jim, you can continue on that. Sloan, if you can continue as the alternate.
Unless Eli wants to stay with.
He's kidding, right?
No, 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 I'm just saying.
Well, just because that came from the flood.
He's a floodboard member.
I'm, I'm fine with either, if I'm going either way.
I'll keep, I'll keep doing it.
Okay.
So you're going to continue to be the liaison, okay. Joint Powers Authority Oversight Committee, I think Sloan, that's actually you, isn't it?
I'm on LAFCO.
Oh, you're on LAFCO.
But I don't mind, well, I don't know, I don't even know what that is, honestly.
Yeah, I don't, I've been.
Can we just ban it or something, then?
Yeah.
How do we get rid of it, then?
It goes beyond our town, right?
Why don't we?
Okay, all right, all right, to the extent that it, I'm in, I'm in.
You're in because you're doing LAFCO, okay, great, thank you.
I need an alternate.
If we need an alternate?
I'll be, I'll be happy to back up.
Mr. Kuhnhart has volunteered, great. Land Use Committee, Jim?
Yes, but I'd also raise the issue of, given its mandate, do we want to keep doing it? Basically reviewing the village shopping centers redesign, but. Which is another, an issue for another day.
Yeah, I think that's an issue for another time. If you can, we can get it on an agenda for you very quickly, maybe in a minute.
You need an alternate for that committee.
I do. David, would you like to do that? I think you had mentioned.
Yes.
You'd be the alternate, okay. Larkspur Porta Madera School District Liaison, Eli, would you step in and take that? And then League of California Cities, North Bay Division, Eli?
Yes.
And then Jim, you can be the alternate.
Okay.
Marin Clean Energy, Mr. Sloan?
I'd like to, yes.
If you can continue on that, yes. And David, you can be the alternate?
I would appreciate that.
Marin Telecommunications, Jim, if you can continue on that.
Can I run for one second? Before I forget, David, you have to get sworn in for Marin Clean Energy at some point.
Even as an alternate?
Yes, before, so at some point you got to come and do that. Otherwise, I couldn't call you, and you couldn't step in for me. They're super, I just don't want to forget to tell you, you have to do that.
And follow another Form 700.
Right.
Oh, yes.
They're strict, so.
Okay.
Okay, just let me know the appropriate time. What's their usual meet time?
It's listed in here.
It's okay. Let's keep going.
12:00 PM on the first Friday of every month.
Marin Telecommunications?
No.
No. Wait, hang on.
Oh, wait, no, wait, continue. Sorry.
It's back to me?
Sorry, Bob, I didn't mean to derail you.
Let's get through this.
My bad.
Okay. Jim, you're going to continue as Marin Telecommunications. Anybody want to be the alternate for Marin Telecommunications, which I think is a fairly easy, light?
If nobody else refuses to step backwards, I'll remain stepping forward.
David, thank you for stepping forward. Refuge and Recycling, Jim, are you going to continue on that, I think? And I'll continue as the alternate.
Okay.
Ross Valley Paramedic, I will continue on that. Safe routes to school, David?
Happy to.
Sign Committee, David?
Happy to.
Transportation Authority of Marin, David?
I would be very pleased to do that.
Thank you, and I need an alternate for that. I haven't spoken to anybody about that. Who would, anybody want to be the alternate for that? Eli?
Yeah, sure.
Okay, great. God, great having new people on the panel. The Twin Cities Coalition for Healthy Youth, so that's actually now the coalition connection. And I don't know that we actually have an official appointee to that anymore because we're no longer funded through CMPA. We received a federal grant last year, which is five years. I'm continuing as the co-chair of that with John Wright of San Anselmo. So we have to figure out if we're supposed to continue to have. For now, I'll continue doing that. Finance Ad hoc Committee, Mr. Andrews, you will continue your great leadership on that, I hope.
Outstanding.
We are going to, I believe, Todd and I had spoke, we're going to add a citizen rep instead of an additional council member, right?
That's good.
Okay.
Are we, what's the timing for that? Are we open to suggestions, or is there a timing for that now?
I would prefer, I mean, for tonight, if we can just go ahead with adding the citizen, if you'd like to bring it up at a separate time, we can certainly have that discussion. Fire Church Services goes away because we now have a fire council, right?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, Plan Bay Area 240 Response Committee Ad hoc, Jim? You can continue on that, but I guess it's gone away, or?
Well, 20, it's already been published, so I guess we're going on to the next phase of.
It'll be 2050 or something?
2050, or it will be the Rena numbers, or something like that, so. It might be better to wrap it into the Land Use Committee if we're going to be fed up.
I was going to have Eli step in and help you as well, since he'll be working with that. And then the Traffic Committee to Study Traffic in the Tamil Vista Fireford Corridor, is that? It's not really active, is it? I mean, BPAC kind of stepped in and took over.
Right, and we can eliminate that.
Okay, so we can eliminate that one? Okay, BPAC, I will continue.
Yeah, but it'll be.
Marine County Commission on Aging, we can continue with Carol Deller. Todd will continue with Mira and Solid Waste Management. And now we have Mosquito and Vector Control, which I've somehow missed, so I'm looking for, yes.
I haven't been able to fill that since our previous appointee retired from that appointment.
Yes, we had an appointee for that for years, but she doesn't want to do it anymore, so. Is there a council member?
I'll do it.
It's in Katati. Katati.
Oh, my God, really? How often do they meet?
Monthly. Yes, staff, and any.
Do we have any staff who live up there?
I mean, I'd be happy to fill in right now, if that's okay with you, to help out.
I'm okay with that.
I mean, I already put my, that's okay, if, maybe, can we, can we do like, maybe Todd will be the alternate or something, and then if.
You really want to drive up?
No, I don't, but.
Second Wednesday of each month at 7:00 PM in Katati, Wednesday.
You sure? All right, Todd's taking one for the team.
Wow, thanks, Todd. Okay, Mr. Mosquito. And then Subcommittee for Board and Commission Interviews, for the Planning Commission, Sloan, if you can continue on that, and Jim, you were going to.
Okay.
Leave in on that. And then Parks and Recreation, I'll continue on that. And Jim, if you can help out with interviews on that, that would be great. Flood Control Board, Jim, you're going to stay on that. Eli, can you step in?
Yep.
On that.
Good.
BPAC, I'll continue on. David, would you be able to step in?
Be happy to.
Marine County Commission on Aging.
Mike?
You're straddling the line between.
Oh, sorry. Thank you. My mic's working, though, right? Okay.
He's going to law school, right?
Marine County Commission on Aging, David, would you be willing to interview for that?
Okay, and is there a second?
Is there anybody else who would like to conduct that?
It only happens once every four years.
I'll do it.
Great. And the Sales Tax Citizens Oversight Committee, Sloan, if you can continue on that. And Jim, if you could help out on that.
Okay.
Okay. Wow.
Mr. Mayor, that was remarkably efficient.
Do we need a motion for that, or how do we?
No.
No, we don't, okay. Well, thank you, all of you, for your participation and hard work on this. For our new members, you will quickly discover that this is going to take more time than the council worked, you thought. It's important work, and I really appreciate everyone taking the time to do this.
Thank you for wrangling it.
Yeah, I really appreciate your approach to this one.
Thank you, thank you, working on it, okay. Oh, what do we got here?
Summary.
Okay, so now we are going to move on to 6.1.3, discussion and possible action to approve resolution 40 slash 218, approving the memorandum of understanding between the town of Porta Madera and the International Firefighters Association.
Thank you, Mr.
Staff report on this?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. If the mayor will allow me, I would like to consolidate the conversation to items 6.13 through 6.17. Those are the MOUs in front of you. And what I would like to do is provide a two-page kind of summary overview of what all of these recommended MOUs do, and how they impact the town of Porta Madera, both in the short term and long term. And then I'll go through each MOU really quickly, answer any questions, and ask for a specific action item for each one, if you'll allow.
So you'd like to do one report for 6.1 through 6.7, rather than individual reports for each one?
Some of them have specifics, but I'd really like to give you an overview of, if you do approve these, all these MOUs in totality as recommended, there's a specific impact to the town of Porta Madera. And so I want to talk about that impact upfront, so you have that, and then go through quickly each one of the MOUs.
So won't that take less time?
I believe so. I am following your lead, sir.
Okay, is everybody okay with that?
Absolutely.
So up on the.
So then let's roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. So up on the screen, in front of the council, and in the back of the room for the community, there's a two-page paper that your town manager and finance director worked on. And we really tried to, you know, things get lost in staff reports. So the idea is to put this on the website, and really kind of tell the story of our two- and three-year contracts that are before you, and how they impact the town. Quickly in summary, as we approached all of our labor groups, police, fire, SCIU, which is Public Works, our mid-managers, all the contracts were up this year, July 1st. And so as we stepped back, we looked in the Bay Area, and the state, and Marin County, and we really looked at what the trends were in the Bay Area. And what we saw is a lot of agencies were doing two- and three-year contracts. And those contracts ranged anywhere from 4% across the board to what you have up there in the first paragraph. There were 4, 3, 3, 3, 3, 3. We ultimately, when we really looked at this thing, our intent was to stay kind of in the median. And I'll talk about what the median really means. And we kind of landed on a 3%, 3%, 2%, a three-year contract. And we really thought that struck a balance, of staying competitive, to keep our quality employees. It was also fairness to staff coping with rising costs in the Bay Area. And it also allowed us to remain fiscally prudent with the town's finances. And so with that, one of the first things we looked at were the town trends. How are we trending with our revenues? This current fiscal year, as you know, we're looking to see, we'll be seeing our revenues increase approximately 1.9%, which is about $350,000. So salary surveys are a tough one, because it's not always an apples-to-apples comparison, right? And so we really spent a lot of time trying to compare ourselves to what each one of our, and this is a difficult task, comparing each of our positions across, across the Bay Area, apples-to-apples. As you're a smaller agency, a lot of us do multiple positions, and it's really difficult. So we spent a lot of time on this. And what we did is we focused on the following counties and the following jurisdictions. So within Marin County, we looked at Larkspur, Mill Valley, Novato, San Anselmo, San Rafael, Sausalito, and Tiburon. And as you can see up there in Alameda County, Albany and Emeryville, Costa County, El Cerrito and Lafayette, San Mateo, Brisbane and Milbrae, Sonoma County, Sonoma and Katati. So a lot of similarities with these cities and towns. When we compared ourselves to those agencies, we looked at total compensation. So we looked at salary, benefits, retirement, everything. And so when we did that, if you evaluated all of our positions, and so I'm going to take fire out of this conversation for a second, take police and fire out, focus on all of our miscellaneous employees, the town manager, all of our department heads, all of our mid-managers, and the Public Works SCIU. When you compared those positions across the board, approximately 28 positions, we were about 0.73% below the median. This is before any increases. So most of these agencies that we compared ourselves to, we're looking at anywhere from 4% to 3% annual increases over the three years. So one of our things, one of our, you know, we wanted to accomplish to stay close to the median. And I think, I think we did that in this recommendation. We started a little bit below the median, but I would argue we're there. At the end of the three years, if you agree with our recommendation, I think we'll be right at the median to a little bit below. At the end of the three years, if you agree with our recommendation, I think we'll be right at the median, to a little bit below. So I think we accomplished our task. So I wanted to give you some comparisons of what those are, without hitting you with a bunch of information, and so, your town manager, keep in mind, your town manager is not asking for a raise, uh, this is not a raise for the town manager, so, but I wanted to, you know, there was a report back, I don't know, five or six years ago, and it said the Town of Port Madera had the highest paid positions in the county or in the Bay Area. Well, I can tell you that we're below the median, so that's not accurate, but I wanna, I wanna give you a comparison to me, start with me and work my way down through the, through the position, so you get a sense of where your, where our positions are. So your town manager, when you compare your town manager to the other 11 city and town managers in Marin County, I am right at the median, I'm just below, I'm about 2.9%, 0.29% below the median. If you rank me amongst the 11, with, uh, one being the highest, 11 being the lowest, I am gonna be ranked number seven in one month. And so I'm really, I'm right in the middle, I'm where I should be, I wanna, I want the council and the community to be reminded that in my contract, it's a five-year contract, I get paid really well, and I appreciate that, thank you. But part of it is, we wanted to bring in the private sector kinda mentality to that, um, to that contract, and so I don't have raises built into my contract for the next, for the five-year contract, I don't anticipate asking for one. I have a bonus pay, so it's based on my performance and the budget, and if I perform well, and the budget allows it, I can, I'm subject to a raise based on my evaluation by the council, but, um, no raises are involved with me. But I wanted to give you a little perspective there, the department heads, again, to the median, to those jurisdictions mentioned above, you can kinda see where everybody falls. The Director of Park and Rec is interesting, Mario's low, he's 20% low to the average, there's some reasons, it comes into the apples-to-apples comparison. There's some anomalies with San Rafael and some others that really, um, he's probably, you know, probably 7% below the median, but you get an idea of where our, our directors are. You will see, and I'll mention, when we get to the department heads, I'm requesting that Adam, our Director and Planning and Building, not only receive the 3% cost of living increase this year, but that we move him to where the Finance Director is, and so I'm asking for an adjustment there, and we'll go over that. And, and I really looked at, as the department heads, really trying to take the Director of Public Works, the Director of Finance, and the Director of Planning and Building, of like, what do they do, what is their responsibility, how important are they to the town, and, and how, what do they have to problem solve, how difficult is their position, and there's a lot of similarities and arguments where they should be kinda together, they should be slotted together, and so we'll talk about that. The mid-managers were really difficult, because when you look at our mid-managers, you can see the list there, um, there's one or two employees in each of those positions. And so when you negotiate with the mid-managers as a group, there's a conversation, do you look at them individually, do you look at them as a group? Historically, the council and the manager has looked at them as a group. If there was anomaly, we would ask for a specific, a specific adjustment, like I am for the Planning and Building Director. But really, when I went through this, um, I thought it was fair to treat them equally, um, and so that's what we did. You can see some differences, and I'll just say, especially on the finance team, our finance team, starting with Daria, the Finance Director, and then the Financial Analysts One and Two, that's John and Lena, uh, you can see they're a little bit above the median there. The reason for it, it was really difficult to compare them to others, they do a lot, and so a lot of times on a city our size, you have one more position, and so they kinda do the job of, they all share kinda 33% of an initial, of another job, and so I really thought it was appropriate to, um, to still recommend the increase for them, um, and so we'll talk about that in a little bit, but it gives you an idea where our mid-managers are overall. The Maintenance Workers, that's SCIU, um, we have approximately eight positions within this group, uh, they were 3.2% below the median. Again, we're asking for a 3% increase, and we'll talk about that. And again, I think overall, we're starting a little bit, or at the median, and I think at the end of the three years, that's where we're gonna remain overall. I wanna give some cost to the, to, to council, so when you look at this, if you, again, we're, we're talking about five MOUs. On fire, I added the Battalion Chiefs to the firefighters, you get a sense of how it affects our budget in 18, 19, 19, 20, and 20, 21, those are the increases there. We're also asking for a commuter program, it's an annual commuter program, we'll talk about that, it's for the mid-managers, that has a $5,000 annual cost.
Well, I'm sorry, can I interrupt for one second, Todd, and I'm sorry, I just wanted to clarify, that sentence, where you say total cost for recommended labor, what you mean is total additional costs to the current funding, is that what you mean by that?
That's correct.
Okay, I'm sorry, go ahead.
And, and keep in mind, with the budget that was approved by council, these costs are, are, are within that budget. We did put that into the current budget, thank you for the clarification. This is interesting, so impacts, so when we talk about impacts to pension liability, and again, we're looking at some, it's called Gov Invest, we're looking at some software that really will, will help us evaluate this with the Finance Committee as we move forward, and we're just not quite there yet, but I wanted to point out a couple important things. So when you look at the impacts of pension liability, remember, uh, PEPRA, so that's the Public Employees Pension Reform Act in 2013. And what that did is, it changed the retirement formulas, and it also restricted how much you could ultimately retire at, it had a cap. And so, um, this is a summary, it's in our, in our budget as well, but really what it did is, classic employees and PEPRA employees, we're gonna talk about now. So classic employees are the ones that were with us before 2013, the reform, our retirement formula was 2.5 at 55. The reform for miscellaneous employees reformed it to 2% at 62, and then for safety, we had a, and we'll talk about this in a little while, had a retirement formula of 3% at 50, uh, and it reformed safety to 2.7 at 62. So that's important, because those are the long-term costs, when we start to problem solve this, you want people to retire at a later age, and at a lesser percentage, and it helps us manage our unfunded liabilities as we move forward. As an example, our unfunded liability for PEPRA employees, right now we have 14 of them, um, so think about that for a second. Right now, we have 28 miscellaneous employees, 14 are classic and 14 are PEPRA. That is really the key point, as you start to see our actuaries change as we move forward, because we have half of our miscellaneous employees that are already under the reform act of 2013, it's really important. And then again, for our classic employees, our classic employees, uh, since that 2013 reform, it did a few things. It allowed us, in Ja, in January of 18, cities and towns could, could force the labor groups to pay 8% for miscellaneous, and 12% for safety employees of the CalPERS cost, they could, we could actually impose that without negotiating by 2018. What our council and staff did years ago, they actually went 4.5 and 5.5% above that reform, and so when you go down there, go down a little bit low, you can see our classic employees, department heads paid 13.5%, um, mid-managers paid 13.5%. Public Works pays 12.5, and our firefighters actually pay 18. So the reform allowed us to force firefighters to pay 12%, while our firefighters pay 18. Our reform for the other miscellaneous groups, one for, through three, we could for, impose 8%, and you can see where we're at. We far, we far outweigh that, and if you wanna put a cost to it, the cost savings to us annually for that reform right there, that additional percentage that I'm talking about, is approximately $83,000 annual savings to the Town of Port Madera. The last point that I wanna point out is, the labor group, uh, for Port Madera Fire, has agreed to reform the 3% formula to three point, uh, to 3% at 55, post-fire consolidation for all classic employees. That's a savings of a few million dollars over the next 30 years, that's substantial to us, and I have some good news, I can't, it's not itemized or agendized correctly, but with the help of Teresa, our Town Attorney and her team, uh, two weeks ago, we met with CalPERS, and we found a, a path, and a, a verbal agreement to consolidation, and to approving our, um, our contract, and so the Town Attorney is working, uh, with CalPERS, we sent the amendments to them for review and, um, a verbal approval, and we hope to have this, uh, our JPA come back to the Town Council, and ultimately to the Fire Council in the next 90 days.
Without regard to that Southern California JPA action, or...
We're able to work around it, and so joint several is taken out of the language, it's proportional, we found a path, and it's agreeable to all. And, and the interesting thing, and I'm really proud of the Town Attorney's Office and our team, um, I think the Centralman Fire, uh, Police Authority in 2013 was the last JPA that was approved by CalPERS, and ourselves and the Peninsula Agencies are gonna be the net, the first JPAs approved since that time, and we actually are gonna set, uh, future policy for all future JPAs, and so I think we really did a huge, you know, we helped the state of California, all cities and towns, allowing this mechanism to like, provide services at affordable rates, and I'm just really proud to be part of that, and I can't thank Teresa and her team enough, so, I'm really excited about that. So with that, um, a quick overview, and I'm happy, again, we wanna put this on the website, but if the community or the council has any nice constructive criticism, I'm happy to change anything on here, I just really kinda wanna just tell a story, so people understand what we're doing, it doesn't get lost in staff reports, and, um, they have an idea of the impacts, um, to the community.
Todd, there's one question, at the very top of your presentation, you said our revenues are up by 1.9%. Does that take into account our passage of Measure F?
No, these are reoccurring revenues, that's a good question, so I compared it to, uh, our Finance Director compared it from last year to this year, it's approximately 1.9%, and those are reoccurring revenues, um, outside of any of the taxes, any of our taxing mechanisms.
Special?
Yes.
Todd, thank you, um, I actually called Todd on Monday and asked for more data from the reports, and, uh, you more than covered it. He said, he said I got it covered, and I think he certainly did, so thank you, that was terrific. Uh, so first, we're gonna have any questions from the council, and this is for items 6.1.3 and through 6.1.7, count, questions from the council for staff. Yes, Jim?
If we approve this, will you be able to pull together a schedule and post it on the website, as required by CalPERS?
That's correct, we'll be coming back to council, um, again, uh, the fire, the two fire MOUs, I'm asking for approval tonight, because those were reviewed by the, um, Fire Council, uh, last month, and so this, I'm considering this the second meeting. The remaining MOUs will be brought back to council for a second review, and, and at that meeting, I'll ask for your approval, and if you approve it, at the same meeting, we will have the public pay scale, yes.
All right, thank you.
Todd, just so I understand this in sort of a big-picture way, going back to the first page under the philosophy, if our cost of living adjustments, year in and year out, are roughly 3%, but our expected revenues are only expected to increase by 1.9%, that means in excess of a percent, so what, 100 and, what, $20,000 a year? We have to make up in other ways, right? We have to reduce costs, we have to, I don't know, find efficiencies, uh, year in and year out, is that about right?
That's correct, so, it's a great question, um, our approach, um, because you have windows and opportunities, and I don't see increases as we, as we continue, this isn't a, a path that you're gonna see every, you know, three years from now, we're gonna request another, cost, cost of living increases are gonna stop, and, and for a period of time, and it's gonna take us back to 2008, you know, where we didn't have increases for four years, five years. We have a window of time, and we built, to your statement, we did just that, we built, um, some cushion, um, we didn't ask for any positions, we're not asking for any salary benefits that we can maintain in good times and bad, and I feel like we did that, and I really, and I've shared this with staff, we've taken all of our reforms, as far as we can, to wait for the next evolution of reforms. These increases, um, we're positioned to maintain them for the next three years, without cutting cost, um, or cutting service, I should say. Even in the, we're expecting an economic downturn as we go, we can answer that, meet that, meet that, but in 2020, and when you look at when the third year of our contract is up, um, it's gonna be a tough year, I think what you're gonna see is some additional reforms, and we're gonna, I'll talk about it in a second, but we're gonna end up for new hires reforming some of the medical benefits, raises will probably be flattened out for a period of years, uh, we anticipate that, and our labor groups also understand that. Sorry, long-winded...
No, 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 it's it.
...statement, but we understand.
No, you do a good job with that, thanks, Todd.
Thank you. Questions? Questions down here? Nope, okay, then I'm going to open it up to the public for questions or comment on items 6.1.3 through 6.1.7, so all four? I guess that's four items, five? Uh, items, anyone in the public wish to speak or ask questions? Okay, hearing none, then I will bring it back to the council, and I would believe we need to do each of these individually, right? Rebecca, okay, so let's start with 6.1.3, is there anyone with additional comments, or would you like to make a motion?
I'm happy to make the motions unless you guys want it. I'll, I'll just do it, we'll try to power through, is that good? I'll move on 6.1.3 as the first one, right? I'll move that we approve Resolution Number 40 slash 2018.
Second.
Councilmember Bailey.
Yes.
Councilmember Beckman.
Yes.
Councilmember Kuhnhart.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Andrews.
Yes.
Mayor Rivasio.
Yes. Okay, moving on to 6.1.4, Resolution Number 41 slash 2018, uh, International Firefighters Association Local 1775. Comments or possible motion?
I'll make the motion, is clear, we've already asked for public comment on all these, right?
Yes.
Okay.
I asked for 6.3.
I'm sorry, I just missed that. All right, I'll move that we approve Resolution Number 41 slash 2018.
Second.
Councilmember Bailey.
Yes.
Councilmember Beckman.
Yes.
Councilmember Kuhnhart.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Andrews.
Yes.
Mayor Rivasio.
Yes. Okay, okay, so now we're at 6.1.5.
I'll move that we approve Resolution...
Introduce.
Oh, introduce, Resolution Number 42 slash 2018.
Is there a second?
Second, um, this is not for final vote tonight, right? This is an introduction for a future vote.
Yes.
Do we need to formally, do we need to take a vote on a formal introduction? I haven't done this in five years.
You, 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 your, your practice is to have two readings, so, when you're talking about ordinances, the first reading is an introduction, the second reading is an adoption, this is a resolution, um, I would suggest that you take a vote, so that it's clear that it has gone through, but what this is, is essentially a first reading, subject to final approval, um, when it comes back to you.
Okay with it anyway.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Bailey.
Yes.
Councilmember Beckman.
Yes.
Councilmember Kuhnhart.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Andrews.
Yes.
Mayor Rivasio.
Yes. So now we're at 6.1.6, Discussion and Possible Action to Introduce Resolution Number 43 slash 2018.
I will move we introduce Resolution Number 43 slash 2018.
Is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Bailey.
Yes.
Councilmember Beckman.
Yes.
Councilmember Kuhnhart.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Andrews.
Yes.
Mayor Rivasio.
Yes. And now 6.1.7, Possible Action to Introduce Resolution 44 slash 2018.
I will move that we introduce Resolution Number 44 slash 2018.
Second.
Councilmember Bailey.
Yes.
Councilmember Beckman.
Yes.
Councilmember Kuhnhart.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Andrews.
Yes.
Mayor Rivasio.
Yes. Okay, moving on to Item 6.1.8, Introduction of Proposed Resolution 45 slash 2018, adopting the Position Classification and Job Description of Administrative Analyst, do you have a report from staff on this?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, uh, I just wanna thank Rebecca for all of her work on this, she did the staff report, the analysis, and really, if you like it, was the brainchild of this, um, this move over the past year, if you don't like it, it's Peter's fault. I was on vacation, I don't know, no. As we talked about about 20 months ago, when we started, kinda this venture, was really to, to look at our positions, uh, there's a number of positions that we no longer have in the organization, we've changed some of the positions to really mirror what we're trying to accomplish today, and in the future, both in succession planning, and really providing the best, um, the best chance for success within the town, and, um, one of the things we did, we did a, um, back a few years ago, there was a study by our Janice, our HR Human Resources Officer, and they looked at the Customer Service Representative position, and, and we have three of them today. We have one upstairs in Administration, we have one down in Planning and Building, and then we have one within Public Works. And we've been pretty lucky, um, with them. But as we've looked at our positions, uh, and who we have, both internally, and what we want those positions to look at, customer service is really important, because it's the first line of defense, someone comes in, they get to see someone, they get help, they call someone, they email someone, it's someone that has to be responsive, and we have great customer service reps, but it's really turned into a position, and you look from succession planning, do you have any room for, for movement, upward movement within your ranks? And so, a couple of our, uh, customer service reps have really turned into what we call Administrative Analyst, and so this is a, a two-meeting conversation for you, for consideration. Uh, we're not asking to hire additional personnel, we're asking you to add a position, um, of right above the Customer Service Representative. And really, it's, it's, it's just that Administrative Analyst, and so when you look at the job duties, you'll see it, uh, on the attachment, but really, it's someone that you can give a project to, that can do the core of the analysis on any subject, anything, and it goes across all levels, Administration, Planning, Building, um, and Public Works. A lot of the analysis that you enjoy today, from your, uh, Planning Department, um, and Administrative Department specifically, has come from two customer service reps, it's come from Tracy downstairs, and Lorena upstairs. And really, when you look at what we ask them to do today, they are not doing the job functions of a customer service rep, it's a much higher position. So when we step back and say, okay, what do we wanna look like in a town, to make sure we're as efficient as possible, we, we can recruit and, uh, retain the best possible candidates, um, we kinda looked around, and Rebecca started to do some research, and we looked at a number of agencies, and Administrative Analysts... really filled the duties of what we ask of our people. And we can give some specific examples if you'd like. But if you go to the last, I just want to go straight to where, what we are thinking. If you go to the last page on the compensation schedule, you can kind of see where we kind of slotted them. And so, you can see, I'm sorry, do we have the customer service? You can see where we slotted them within our chart, and they're right at where the administrative assistant is, and right below. What's that? Yeah. I'm sorry, council. If you go to the, let's go to the fiscal impact of the staff report. It's page three. You can see where the customer service, you can see his chart there, and where customer service representative is. It starts at $4,900, and it maxes out at $5,900. What we did is we started the bottom step at $5,900, and we went to $7,200. And that's really a comparison of other cities of looking at salary surveys. And we really slotted this position in the range of what Megan is over in the fire department as an administrative assistant. If you were to recommend this at the second meeting, what the recommendation of staff is, is that we promote two of our customer service reps to this position. And you can see just above the chart what that, what that would mean to us fiscally within this current budget fiscal year. And I'll just say this, that something that, and we talked about this 20 months ago, when I came in, something that really jumped out at me is all the functions that our town clerk does. She's the assistant to the town manager, she's the town clerk, she handled all HR, she handled, I mean, she handled everything. And so, the council recognized that that was a problem, and we added Lorena as a customer service rep. What Lorena has turned into with the newsletter, with the website, with the analysis, she's an assistant to the town clerk.
To the grants.
To the grants. You can put her, what's really unique with them is you can put them in any department, and they know nothing about it, and you say, "This is what I want you to do," and they give you a 90% complete product, where then the department head can step in and finish it. So, it's been highly successful. What I would like to do is add this position for consideration, and then it's arranged. When we have customer service representatives, they have an opportunity to promote into this position. It's good for the employee. It's great for the town. And it really frees up your department heads and your town clerk to do the job that you pay them to do, and that's to be department heads. And so, this is one of the last changes that I think I'm going to be asking from a job description standpoint. But it's been really successful. I'm happy to answer any questions. But if you were to approve it at the second meeting in August, we would promote two customer service reps to this position. Did I leave anything out, Rebecca? Would you like to jump in?
I think the town manager covered our rationale for requesting this position. It's just an incredible tool for recruitment and giving people this growth opportunity that helps them basically learn new skills and develop new skills and be of better service to the town and the community. I can't say enough about what Tracy and Lorena have done for the town and for public outreach and for being the face that greets the public. And they've proven their skills and their readiness for this position.
And again, they would still be customer service reps as well. It's part of their duty. So, where their position now, they would stay there. You just have that extra, that talent, and really being able to provide that service to the community when they ask complex questions. You don't have to say, "Well, I'll get you in touch with so-and-so in a day." Like, they can handle it. And so, we look at this as a huge benefit to, to our community.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from council for staff? Just love.
I just have one question. It's a definitional, definitional question. What does the term confidential mean in here? Is that like a term of art? I feel like it means something other than just secret, but maybe I'm missing it. Does it refer to a type of employee or something?
You know, I actually discussed that with the finance director. I think I may have misunderstood the intention of that term. The finance director seemed to think that it referred to the positions that were authorized to bargain in a collective bargaining arrangement, not necessarily subject to confidential information, which is what I understood it to be. So, the move, the move from, moving this position from professional, technical to confidential was something that I thought was necessary because my staff handles confidential information. But maybe the town attorney can answer this question, but I don't think that was the intention of the term confidential employee.
I think it can mean different things in different settings. So, I think I would need to understand what was the intent here, and we could clarify what the intent was. Sometimes a confidential employee is someone who thus is not represented by a union, often because they may be negotiating with the union on the other side. Confidential employee could also mean someone who is dealing with confidential information. So, I am not clear what is intended here. So, we could find out that answer. This matter is coming back to you. And if there is a necessary tweak in the language, we could certainly make that happen. So, I can work together with staff to clarify that and make it, make it, make sure this is doing what it is that was intended to do.
And this is just related to the question of why we are requesting to create the new position in the classification of confidential employees, whereas their pre-existing classification of customer service representative is under professional, technical employees.
So, does that mean if we wanted to, we could still introduce this tonight, and you could provide clarification a second time?
That's correct. That's correct. We can, we can make adjustments the next time.
Any other questions from the council? Then I will open it up for public comment, questions. Yes. Hello, Patty.
Patty Stoll here. Just a quick clarification, and that was that the town manager said this will be one of the last recommendations for reclassification that I'm going to submit. I really firmly hope that that is not excluding the new position as the person who is the heart and soul of the age-friendly intergenerational center that directs that program. So, that's the only thing I wanted to say. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Anybody else? Then we will close public comment, and we will bring it back to the council for comments and possible action.
Yeah, just like to comment briefly. I think it's critical to the well-being of the town that the town of Cordmadera is a good place to work. And I think that this measure is a very reasonable way to help accomplish that.
I respect what you're trying to do.
Yes. I do as well, and, you know, I've been at that customer service counter a number of times, and they do a great job. We have one of the best in the county, so I'm really proud of that, so.
Yeah, I don't care what you guys say. I think you're doing a great job. All right, I'll move that we introduce resolution number 45/2018.
Subject to?
Subject to, I mean, I don't know, I just hate when we're, it looked to me like a term of art, confidential. And so, I just wondered what it meant.
It, it is a term of art. And so, what I'm not clear is, was it intended to mean what the term of art means, or is something else intended? So, I will sort to the bottom, and we'll make whatever changes are needed.
Okay.
When we bring it back.
So, we have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second with the amendment.
Okay.
Councilmember Bailey.
Yes.
Councilmember Beckman.
Yes.
Councilmember Kuhnhart.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Andrews.
Yes.
Mayor Ravazio.
Yes. Okay.
And then 46 also. It's a two-part.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry, I missed that.
Sorry, what?
I have to make a second motion.
Oh, no, there's a second one. Oh, I'm sorry.
Introducing resolution number 46/2018.
Is there a second?
Second.
David's seconded. Councilmember Bailey.
Yes.
Councilmember Beckman.
Yes.
Councilmember Kuhnhart.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Andrews.
Yes.
Mayor Ravazio.
Yes. Okay. So, now moving on, I think we're now at item seven, town manager and council reports. Mr. Cusamano.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I'm going to defer my comments to the public works director.
No? Okay.
Thank you, Mayor Ravazio, members of council, Peter Brown, Public Works Department. Couple topics I wanted to cover. First of all is staffing. I know that we went through the Fourth of July parade from the public works maintenance side. We did a lot of brush clearing, and our public works maintenance staff has been working hard and been slightly understaffed. And so, I wanted to commend them for their last few months of pushing, pushing through and keeping the town in good working condition. The same is true, actually, for the engineering team. As you all know, we have an associate and two new senior engineers who have taken up a lot of work in a short period of time since they've been there, one of which is the subject of what you see there. I'm going to talk about the private sewer-lateral ordinance to date. But certainly, you know, RJ Suko has come in and really taken over our pavement management program and moved that forward. We have a bid out right now to repave what we think are the most needed streets in town. Jared Berio has taken over many projects, including the trellis at Town Park, which many of you see is now finally erected. We couldn't have done that without Jared's expertise, and he jumped right in and took on that project and delivered it. So, that's, that's impressive to me. And then, Fernanda Stefanic, who has come to us from the private sector, from new engineering, and is really a specialist in sanitary district issues, led our research and effort on the private sewer lateral ordinance, which went into effect three days ago on August 4th. And so, we're just brand-new into it. And Todd asked that I update you all on how that's going and what conversations we've been hearing and what's forthcoming for you all. And so, the part of the reason why I bring up our pavement management program is that typically, you know, when you go to repave your streets, you want to make sure your main lines and your lower laterals are intact because you don't want to cut into a brand-new, freshly-decked street because that's bad practice. And a lot of towns have moratorium policies, and they don't allow you to do that. And so, what we did, knowing that our pavement bid was going out and our ordinance was about to be passed, we kind of, I would say, in somewhat rush mode, put out several hundred letters to property owners who live on streets that are going to be repaved. I believe the mayor got one himself.
Got one.
And, you know, the letter basically said, "Hey, good news. We're about to pave your streets. And oh, by the way, you should probably check your lateral and do it quickly." That's my synopsis of the letter. I think the next time we go out for pavement management, we will give more like the three-to-six-month lead time because we did not have enough time. And so, I want to apologize to the community for the quick turnaround on this particular round. However, we have had, I would estimate around 50 separate interactions. Most of those have come through Fernanda, RJ, or me. And I can say that with two exceptions, those interactions have been inquisitive and interested and supportive. And really, to our surprise, you know, the community is on board with this. So, I know there are some concerns, and I know that some, some members of the current and past council have expressed those concerns, and we're addressing those. But I want to let you know that we sent this letter out to hundreds of people, and just about everyone has said, "Okay, what exactly do I need to do, and how do I need to do it, and what are the implications of it?" And, "Okay, I'm on it." And so, we're pleased with that. We do, we did have one correspondence, an individual who is concerned about transfer of property under certain conditions, and what happens if a family is not financially able to deal with something like a sewer lateral upgrade, or if they don't do it in time, would there be penalties, and would those accrue, and would that be burdensome? And so, we're dealing with, kind of answering some of those questions. We don't think we have any policies for penalties or interest accrued. So, if anybody has that question, when we find out that your lateral needs repaired, that's when you need to repair it, even if it needed to be repaired five years ago. And then, the other individual that we spoke with was concerned about, you know, trees planted in the parkway, and were they planted by the town, or are they hurt trees, and do they impact your lateral, and are they cracking your sidewalk? And so, we're working through those issues as well. But in all, I would say that the private sewer-lateral ordinance is important, and it's working well so far. And then, I did want to give you just a heads-up that we are looking to come back, perhaps at your next meeting, with some more specific direction. I think we mentioned to you at the time of the adoption of the ordinance, you know, we weren't completely sure about a few things, and I'll give you an example. So, when we go forward with our pavement management program, we have some options to continue with the current practice, which is notify homeowners, you know, here's what's coming, here's what you need to do. We can continue to do that. We believe there's some rationale to looking at the fees we collect. I think we're the lowest in Marin County at $492 a year. I know our neighbors charge around $900 to $1,000 for annual sewer service. And so, if we were to look at some type of spreading the costs across the district, when we do CIP projects like these road improvements, we're going to ask for your direction. Would you like us also to inspect the main line, replace the main line when it needs to be done, and include the lower laterals that are privately owned, but we're already going to be in there, you know, underneath the roadway? And, you know, should some of these fees go towards, we don't take over ownership of the lower laterals, they still own, they're still owned by the, by the property owner. But we do, because we're in there doing the work, it's a one-time repair, and we'll get everything up to speed. Some other jurisdictions do that. That, that tends to defray the need and the concern for some of the grant program or the loan program that we've heard discussed. As you, just to remind you, your CIP this year sets aside $50,000 for a grant program with a minimum grant amount of $1,000, the parameters of which we've only just discussed in generality. So, we'll bring that back to you for specifics as well. And that, of course, is impacted by, you know, what direction you give us in terms of moving forward with the lateral ordinance and our pavement management program, because they really are tied together. You know, we can't, we can't look at them separately. So, that's my report. I'm happy to take any questions that you may have.
I have a question. Is that what called the whole rationale for this lateral ordinance was, we wanted to make certain that we did not have water intrusion into our system that was then feeding into the central Marin sanitary facility, which eventually would result in us having to double the size of it or increase the central?
Councilmember Andrews, I would say that was one of three key points. The only thing I would add to that is that we want to make sure that raw sewage isn't spilling into neighborhoods and infiltrating into the groundwater. It's, you know, rain can penetrate an imperfect system during storms, but, you know, sewage can seep into the groundwater 365 days a year.
Right.
So, that's, that's something that we're basically charged to, to, to repair. And that basically comes from the Federal Clean Water Act, as well as the Regional Water Quality Control Board. They've directed us to implement five capital improvements, one of which was adopting a sewer lateral ordinance. So, those would be the three things, I would say, what you mentioned about flow, and then the other two as well.
Yeah, I just had a question. You mentioned the grant program. Are we exploring a loan program as well? Because a lot of the other sanitary districts do that, and a lot of people use that.
Yeah, I think that-
Because it's just put right under the property taxes and paid off over 10 years.
Sure, understood, Mayor Ravazio. We will bring back to you a write-up of what that would look like. You know, some of the just anecdotal stories you hear when you talk to neighboring districts that do such things is that a certain amount of property owners really benefit and enjoy it, but from administrative standpoint, qualifying people for loans and dealing all that from administrative side gets somewhat cumbersome. But we'll give you the pros and cons of that at a future, future date.
Thank you. Any other questions for staff?
One, just a comment. I think it would be good for you to keep going with, keeping our practice sort of in line with similar jurisdictions around us and their practice. If, I've heard, I don't know, that the majority of the jurisdictions have a lot of action upon transfer of ownership. We should really dig into the similar practices and keep in line with, you know, real estate undertakings in that county.
Okay. Anybody else? No? Okay.
Peter, I think you're handling that whole sewer thing just right. Thank you.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you. Anything else from staff? Town, town manager? No?
Just our retreat is next Tuesday here at 8:00.
Oh, here? I thought we were going to go to Cavallo Point.
And staff is finishing a draft agenda, and we will work through the mayor on finalizing that for the council. And really, it's just to go over some of our procedural things with the council and staff. And really, I think the focus is going to be, have a little bit more discussion about our policy with the sewer lateral ordinance, and then I think a lot of planning and building issues, and really the goal set, try to accomplish, you know, eight things this, this coming year, and really goal set. And so, that's our, our goal for that meeting, and it'll take hopefully as long as it takes, two hours, hour and a half.
90 minutes, no problem. Okay, thank you. Councilmember reports. Any reports?
Nothing to report.
Nothing to report? Nothing to report?
New Hampshire was really fine for three weeks in, in, three weeks in July.
Okay. Anything else?
We still have a police chief for another year. We signed the contract.
Oh, good.
Or approved the contract, so.
Great, that's from CNPA?
Yes.
No reports, but my thanks and compliments to the police and fire for having the night out thing up at Mickey Park. That was, that was good. And please give our compliments to who, I know you've got people up handling the fires and-
I've got some great pictures already, so it's going up.
But, but, but on a more serious note, we read every day, and we're grateful to you and your people for helping out with the fires in Northern California. I know that it's life-threatening work, and you're helping people in a, in a meaningful way like very little else, so thank you for that.
And I just had a very brief report. I was at an RVPA meeting last week, and we are putting the paramedic tax on the ballot in November as well, and we authorized purchase of a new ambulance, which we've been working on for a while, which Dan Hillmer thought was really funny to have me make the motion since I was in an ambulance three months ago that was involved in an accident.[1446.65][1446.65](laughter) So, I did. Okay, moving on to item 8.1, review of the draft agenda for August 21st. Are there any additions, removals, questions regarding the draft agenda, which of course is subject to further modification?
Okay. Could I, could I just ask the, Mr. Mayor, the source of the public hearing on moratorium on cannabis sales? Is, is that us, is that police? What's the source of that being on the agenda?
Turn that over to staff.
Sure.
I think I can, I can address it, and then I'll hand it off to your planning director. You have a moratorium currently in effect, and it's getting ready to expire. Under the government code, you have the option to extend it for one more year in order to get to the finish line on your zoning process. And so, state law allows you to do it. It essentially freezes into place the status quo, and that has been frozen into place while you consider what your policies are and get to the finish line on making any changes to your zoning ordinance. With that, I will hand over to Adam.
I got one here. And just, we are looking into the possibility of actually, I believe we have, the ordinance currently expires on September 19th, 2018, and we have a council meeting on the September 18th, I believe, hopefully I have, but something like that, it's a day before. So, we're looking into whether or not we should extend then at that time or not, although we may, just to be an abundance of caution, I guess, go ahead with, at the next meeting and extend it, sort of, and can, can review that. I will mention as well, in the meantime, in the next month, we are also going to have a couple of public workshops on the cannabis legislation and try to educate some people about what is in the state law and where we are as a town currently, and sort of inform the final, the permanent ordinance going forward.
And I believe if we don't extend the moratorium, then state law becomes effective.
That's correct, and licenses could be commercial. Right now, we have a moratorium on the commercial business licenses cannot be approved or granted in the town of Corder Madera. So, that's correct.
Okay.
Let me see. No commercial, you can grow up, there's six of your own, and-
So, this has to do with commercial use. This, this has nothing to do with personal grows or the use of recreational use or medicinal use. This is about a brick-and-mortar business coming into town and establishing itself in Corder Madera, like a retail shop or manufacturing or any of the other, sort of in the, in the chain. And you have put a moratorium in place, again, so you can think through and have a thoughtful process about what it is you want to allow or not allow in the town. And without a moratorium, someone could come and request from the state a license to bring a business and establish in Corder Madera. And so, the moratorium prevents that until you figure out what you want your policy to be. State law does allow one additional year extension and no more.
And we currently have no rule against delivery, correct?
That's correct. So, that would be, that would be someone coming to deliver a cannabis product into the jurisdiction. You have no moratorium on that. However, there is a moratorium on, say, a delivery business coming and establishing a brick-and-mortar here so that they can deliver, maybe to lots of jurisdictions. So, this is really about the brick-and-mortar and about business, has nothing to do with personal use or use at all, or deliveries into the town.
Any other questions about the agenda or additions, changes? Okay. Hearing none, then we are adjourned.
Oh, there's one announcement on the fun front. On Saturday, the 18th, don't forget the Chili Fest and the big baseball game between police and fire and the Lions Club. No? No, they won't?
Actually, the softball game has been canceled because-
What?
Because of the North Bay fires?
Oh.
Because we have folks out, and the police department have a number of people injured already, and-
They lost my 30 last night.[1757.11][1757.11](laughter)
We don't want to risk any other injuries.
But the Chili Fest is still on, and the-
The rest of the event is still there, and both police and fire will be there to participate and educate.
And the Lions Club is going to staff the event.
Well, then, thank you, and we are adjourned.
Nice work. 8:15. Boom.[1779.83][1779.83](music)
[music] 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 [music]